Good morning. Welcome to our Minnehaha County Commission meeting for October 24th. I'm calling our meeting to order. And note for the record that we do have a quorum of commissioners present. Commissioner Bender is absent this week. Just a reminder, silence your cell phone, avoid embarrassment. And if you're going to speak today, we have a sign up table in the back of the room. Just give us your name and information so we can, we have to have it for our record. I'm going to ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Look for a motion to amend our agenda by removing Agenda Item 13. Authorize the Chair to sign the agreement for design on MC 2313, a gravel pit building.
Yes, Mr. Chair, that's coming per the request of the Highway Department. So that would be my motion to amend the agenda.
Second?
Motion is second. All those in favor of amending the agenda will vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion to amend the agenda is carried. And now we will look for a motion to approve our agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Our agenda is approved. We now have our consent agenda. Consent agenda is our routine business bills and that type of thing, reports from various departments and counties. All that is public record if you ever want to see it. But if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on the consent agenda, if there is, please come forward, state your name and where you live. And if not, we'll move on. We look like we have somebody who wants to comment on our consent agenda.
Chad Ellsworth, Rapid City, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I object to the Commission's approval of the draft October 17, 2023 minutes as published. The minutes documented 12 violations of 1.3 Rules of Procedure and SDCL 3-4-4 concerning the requirement that the auditor shall act as a member of the Board of Commissioners when there is an even number of county commissioners. The unexcused absence of, without Zoom, from the person that's absent created a vacancy by special privilege, and that violates Article 2, 2.1, Paragraph 3 of the Rules of Procedure, an abuse of official position. The minutes were preceded with an agenda that omitted the public right to object to the consent agenda. I find that extremely prejudicial, arbitrary, and hostile. The above violations and conduct prejudice the right of your constituents in Lincoln, Pennington, and Minnehaha Counties. It violated the duty of the auditor to participate, as was her duty, an arbitrary, prejudicial, and hostile action against the auditor. At Agenda Item 2, which was the approval of the minutes of October 3, 2023, the minutes did not disclose an important and relevant factor in the lawsuits concerning the county, the Commissioners, and Paloma, and we, the people, where both of the transcripts were barred from public viewing on October 3, 23, many months after the termination of the lawsuits. This was on the date of this speaker's first objection to the consent agenda being manipulated in protection of ESNS. The above violations and conduct prejudice is the right, and the above demonstrate your suppression of facts accruing to the status of ESNS at the time. And this is Item 16 of the October 17 record. At the time of payment-
Chair Ellsworth, we're at our three-minute time limit. Public input.
ESNS didn't even exist, and you're paying them now. Your time is up. Disqualify and dissolve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will move on then to our regular business. So, we're going to continue our public hearing, and I've got a very nice, there it is. So, I'm going to call up Mason here. Oh, there he is. I'll let you kick this up, and then I'll-
Sure. So, as explained, this item was heard at the County Commission meeting last week, so I'll just give a brief overview of this item. That was discussed at length at the last meeting. The Commission at the last meeting did vote to add a 12th condition to this permit requiring the applicant obtain a solid waste permit prior to operations beginning on the site. And the County Commission also voted to amend Condition 2 in order to limit the number of days where grinding can take place on this site to 12 days a month. After these amendments, the motion to approve Conditional Use Permit 2351 as amended failed to pass with a split vote of two to two. And I will just mention, since last week, the Planning Office did receive a solid waste permit application from the petitioner, but it's the Planning Department's position that we cannot process that solid waste permit without the land use being first approved through this Conditional Use Permit today. So we would need approval of this permit before the solid waste permit could be approved. And if this permit would be denied, we would then not process the solid waste permit. So with that, the County Commission may vote to uphold, amend, or defer action on this item. And I'll just go through, just go to the site plan here, since everybody's aware of the property, just as a reminder. It's at the corner of 267th and 463rd. The specific site plan will only utilize this portion on the eastern side, which is referenced here in the site plan page. And I am available for any questions if you have them. And I believe you were given all of the documents that were submitted between last Tuesday and today. So if you have any questions regarding those or anything else, I am available for questions.
Questions for Mason. Would you, one thing, Mason, just emphasize that the site plan is very specific to the rezone and any changes to the site plan. What would happen?
Yes. So, I'll just go back to the staff reports here to reference the specific condition. So Condition Number 1, that was approved at the Planning Commission level, was that the property shall adhere to the submitted site plan. So if the petitioner were ever to deviate from the site plan, that would be a violation of the Conditional Use Permit if approved. So they would have to follow this site plan based on what has been approved today. If they ever were to expand the area to more area on this property, or to less area, or if they were ever to change its site plan significantly, they would have to come back to the Planning Commission first to amend the Conditional Use Permit, and then if appealed, come back to you.
So, storage of wood outside the area wouldn't be permitted, that type of thing?
Would not, no.
Thank you.
It has to follow this site plan. And if we did receive a violation of those conditions, we do have a review process. It's review and recall of the permit where we can recall the permit to the Planning Commission level if they are violating those conditions, and change the conditions, or recall the permit if it's deemed necessary, if they're violating them significantly. So there is a recall and review process if they do violate the approved conditions.
Okay. Any other questions for Mason? Commissioner Blindberg?
Thank you. Mason, just curious, I had read some information about the Dakota Access Pipeline on this property, and I don't remember hearing about that before. Can you tell me what we need to know about that?
I do believe the Dakota Access Pipeline does go through this property. I don't know the exact route. I believe it comes up through the landfill, and somewhere in this general area, it does come up. I guess it didn't come up as a concern because the petitioner is not, like the landfill, they are not disturbing the soil and digging up the soil and burying garbage like the landfill does. They're just storing trees on top of the soil, grinding them and taking them off. So I guess the piling of trees on this site wouldn't be any more intensive on this land as normal agriculture. So that is why it did not come up in our review.
Okay. So if I understand you correctly, we don't need to take that into consideration with this application?
Correct.
Okay.
From the Planning Department's position, that would not affect approval of this permit. This land use should not affect the pipeline, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mason. Got written narrative here, so I'm going to read it as much as I hate doing it. As you remember, the Commission had a tie vote last week, and pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law 7818, when the Commission is equally divided on any question, a decision is deferred until the next meeting today, at which such question will be decided by a majority of the Board. As such, the initial question before the Board today is the same motion which received a tie vote at the hearing last week, in asked a motion to approve Conditional Use Permit 23-51 as amended. As such, the Commission, in deciding how to handle the question, may vote on the previous motion without any change, or may offer other motions to address the question at hand. Before we begin, I'm going to explain our process for this morning. As this Board accepted extensive public testimony from both proponents and opponents at last week's meeting, it is my intention to limit additional testimony this morning. Therefore, in deference to anyone who has attended again today, and recognizing that legal counsel represents each side of the issue, I will allow counsel for the proponent applicant, Mr. Cheddar, up to 10 minutes to present any additional arguments. And then Ms. Prostralo represents a number of the opponents as their counsel, and I will allow her 10 minutes to present any additional arguments. And at the conclusion, I will again allow Mr. Cheddar a few minutes, no more than five for any rebuttal. So, we'll start with the attorneys. Finally, at the conclusion of the attorney's arguments, I will allow additional public testimony for a total of 20 minutes. All persons wishing to make public comment will be allowed no more than three minutes, each within the time allocation set forth above. To avoid repetition and afford as much time as possible to other interested parties, if individuals wish to indicate their support in agreements for prior comments, please give your name and simply indicate such agreement without further comment. I concur with so-and-so. As a reminder to both the attorneys and to the public, please be mindful of your time and avoid repetition of prior testimony. We heard your comments at the last meeting, and at the conclusion of this period for comment, I will close the hearing to board discussion and action by the Board. I have a lot of notes. I know the other Commissioners have a lot of notes. We have a lot of pictures and data, and so on and so forth, so no repetition, please. At this time, I will ask Mr. Cheddar if he would like to make any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. I certainly don't anticipate having 10 minutes of comments, but I have a few things that I want to address in light of information you've received in the past week. As a preliminary matter, as Mason mentioned, we have filed the solid waste permit application as requested by Commissioner Karski. We believe that Mason's comments on that topic reflect how the county should approach a number of the concerns that have been raised in the past couple of weeks, and I'll speak to those a little more specifically here in a moment. Certainly appreciate all the time and attention this has taken from county staff over the past seven or eight months, as reflected in the length of time it's taken. And I think, as Commissioner Kipley mentioned last week, this has been an iterative process in terms of finding a location that addresses concerns that have been raised over time. It's an iterative process in terms of getting and gathering data and information to address concerns that have, or questions that have been raised by Commissioners. And through that iterative process, I think we have a location that is both appropriate for the proposed use, that satisfies all of the county's requirements for a conditional use, and that offers the opportunity for Minnehaha County to both extend the lifespan of the Sioux Falls Regional landfill, and also give a private business owner the opportunity to demonstrate to a specific neighborhood in Minnehaha County who feels aggrieved, give Mueller Palats the opportunity to show these neighbors that private business can do things better than sometimes public operations can conduct themselves. So having said that, there's a host of things that you've been provided, a mountain of paper, and I don't, I'm not necessarily proud of how much paper you've received, so I'm trying to distill it to a few key facts. Beyond what you heard last week, a couple of things that I want you to keep in mind. The testimony that you've received and the documentation provided, including the volume information in terms of the size of wood that will be processed, is wood that's kept out of the Sioux Falls Regional landfill, extending the lifespan of that facility to the benefit of all the residents of Minnehaha County and the surrounding communities. Furthermore, as Mason clarified, despite the confusion about where this Conditional Use Permit applies to on the mother parcel that was depicted on the screen, the Conditional Use Permit only pertains to the site. And Dean Karski, Commissioner Karski asked that question. Our operations are confined to the site plan as presented. It's entirely possible that wood in the first weeks and months will not occupy the entirety of that teal, that coloration, but that site will not, we will not deviate from the boundaries of that site moving forward. Further, to highlight additional comments relative to the landfill, I'm respectful of the Commission's decision to amend the Conditional Use Permit, but I think it's worth highlighting that there are Conditional Use Permits the county has granted to the city of Sioux Falls. The city of Sioux Falls is operating equipment and machinery within close proximity. In fact, the property is contiguous to the site, that is the same grinding equipment that the applicant will operate on the site. And you've restricted the number of days per month that the applicant can operate that equipment, but that same equipment can operate 30 days a month, 24/7, just a few hundred yards to the east of this site. So I think that the concerns, to the extent they still exist, I think are addressed by the fact that that same use is taking place in close proximity. As highlighted by Mason, we've satisfied all of the requirements of Section 19 of the ordinance. Conditional Use Permit is appropriate, as was evaluated by the Planning Commission and by staff. The bulk of the additional issues that have been raised by the opponents in their written submission are really seeking to turn the process of Conditional Use Permitting in Minnehaha County on its head. Rather than following the ordinances whereby the Planning Commission and this body hear a Conditional Use Permit application and adopt and implement certain conditions that must be satisfied in order for that use to proceed, the opponents have now asked for the County Commission to become the arbiter of all of the conditions that otherwise come after a Conditional Use Permit. The first example of that was the solid waste permit. The process, as highlighted by Mason, is that after a Conditional Use Permit is granted, certain applications are made to the county staff. The experience, the expertise of those staff then evaluate those additional conditions and permits and applications that must be submitted. The same is true for the access permit, the approach permit. The same is true for a building permit. The same is true for the plat that must be reviewed by a number of county offices. So, the opponents, at this point in time, as we play this game of whack-a-mole over the past seven months, the current mole that stuck his head out of the board is that there's all of these other departments that have roles, they don't want to allow those departments to play those roles. They want all of the four of you today to make a determination whether or not we've satisfied plating requirements, the approach requirements, the building permit requirements, it goes on and on. When the process and the ordinance layout, you adopt a Conditional Use Permit, you lay out specific conditions that must be complied with, and allow your departments and your employees to execute and follow through on those requirements. It would be a solution to the county's budget crisis that happens year after year if the four of you would take all those responsibilities on, but I think it's an insult to the decades of experience that Mr. Anderson has, that the Highway Superintendent has, for you to supplant your perspective on their role. And you can add conditions that must be complied with, that they have to implement, but don't erase the decades of experience that those departments have in evaluating this process. I would ask, as a procedural matter, Mr. Chair, if a great deal of public testimony about the applicant's business and its history are contained in the records for Conditional Use Permits 2314 and 2343, I think some of that documentation has been rolled into submittals for this particular Conditional Use Permit, but I would ask, I would defer to the State's Attorney's Office, but I would like the Commission to take notice of those other records, so should this matter continue beyond this body, that the record would reflect both the proceedings of this Conditional Use Permit, as well as the other two permits the applicant has sought from Minnehaha County since March of 2023. Finally, I want to speak to the easement question raised by the Commission this morning. To the extent that there is a private easement on the site, the property is being purchased by the applicant, subject to those easements. If there's any use limitation over that easement area, it has to be recognized, it has to be followed by the applicant. I don't think that it changes the site. It doesn't change the site use, as Mason testified to or provided information to you this morning. From the planning perspective, Planning Office perspective, it doesn't change this process. That's a piece of the process that's evaluated by a number of departments when the plat gets approved. So the plat would reflect all easements of record. It would reflect whether or not there's appropriate access to this parcel, or the parcel to the west, the mother parcel. All of those processes are followed by other departments to ensure compliance. So this body's role is to approve or deny a Conditional Use Permit, and it's the job of the other county departments to evaluate and implement the conditions that are attached to the permitting process. So with that, I spoke a minute or two longer than I had intended, but I want to answer your questions this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Cheddar. Any questions for Mr. Cheddar?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Cheddar, a couple of questions as we possibly consider other amendments or conditions. What would your perspective or your client's perspective be on, rather than a 10-year sunset, a five-year sunset, so that we could review this operation and take that before this body in five years rather than 10 years?
I don't think it's appropriate for my client to have conditions imposed upon it for a use that is otherwise existing in the county on busier roads and closer proximity to homes than is currently in place. That said, if the only path forward is that limitation, I will respect the decision of this body. I'm not sure, and maybe Mason can speak to whether or not a shorter sunset has been imposed upon any other conditional uses in Minnehaha County, and what those might be, and whether or not it's an appropriate extension of those instances to this instance.
And, Mr. Chair, one follow-up. I respect that answer. Similar question as to Condition Number 5. We currently ask that your operation, all the driveways within the operation be gravel-surfaced, and then those areas must also be treated with dust control agent and maintained in a manner to limit the production of dust from the gravel surfaces. What would your client's response be to asking for some kind of paved or otherwise hard surface to further reduce dust and protect the area and traffic, mud on the road, et cetera? Any response to that thought?
Once again, the other similar use in Minnehaha County, in Mapleton Township, that it's on a busier road and closer proximity to homes, does not have that level of requirement imposed upon it. I think that fact needs to be part of the Commission's calculation, but if that is the decision of this body, we will abide by all requirements, as has been our theme throughout our public presentations for the past several months, that the applicant follows the rules, and if that's the rule that's imposed, we will follow the rule.
Thank you, Mr. Cheddar. And Ms. Prostralo.
Good morning, Commissioners. As you know, my name is Lisa Prostralo with Redstone Law Firm, and I have been retained to represent Wanda Scott, Dan Brant, Glenn Fierstenberg, and Grant Eckholm relative to this matter. All of my clients are Minnehaha County residents who will land in this area and will be directly impacted by the proposed site. I'd like to devote my comments this morning to the new information that has been submitted to the Commission. I will speak for myself that I was very surprised when I checked the Register of Deeds for recorded easement to learn that there is a Dakota Access Pipeline running directly through this site. And I want to be clear that this is not, if I could have the- that this actual pipeline itself is not running around the proposed site, as was suggested earlier. It's actually running directly through the portion that's designated in blue for dumping and grinding of wood. The termination of the easement is about 317 feet towards this border of the property, which means it's running basically right through this portion of the site. So what we are dealing with is a situation where Mueller Palats, in the many months that this matter has been before the Commission, in its application and in its site plan, it failed to disclose to this Commission that there is a Dakota Access Pipeline running through its site, a pipeline that is set to run over 450,000 barrels of oil per day. That is a 50-foot easement that has restrictions on what can, the property can be used. And, for example, the landfill has setback requirements that are quite substantial, 300 feet, in fact. Now, in Mr. Cheddar's submission to this counsel, he argued that no setback is required here because we aren't digging into the ground. Well, what we are doing in this proposed wood processing facility is bringing in very heavy machinery, very heavy machinery, and semis, grinding wood and piling it, sometimes one to two stories tall. That ground wood compresses under the weight of heavy machinery to such an extent that it heats and creates a fire risk, and as it breaks down, you can even see the steam coming off of it from that heat that's generated. That is a significant impact on the use of this property, a huge deviation from its prior use, which was simply pastureland and farmland. It is Mueller's burden as the applicant to establish that its proposed use will not have an adverse impact on the health, safety, and welfare of the Minnehaha County residents that you serve. You are the gatekeepers for making sure that this proposed use is safe and appropriate. Empty assurances that everything's going to be fine is not evidence, but that is the only thing that you have before you to evaluate the impact of this pipeline on this proposed site. There is no assessment as to what effect running heavy machinery on top of or in close proximity to a pipeline like this, what effect that could have, what risks are associated with it, how that compression of the wood could affect drainage and soil compression, thereby by extension affecting that oil pipeline. All of these are questions that haven't been raised, and they haven't been evaluated by Mueller. We know that because Mueller didn't even think it fit to inform the Commission of the existence of this pipeline, not in its- the existence of this pipeline, not in its application and not in its site plan. Now, I recognize that the argument is all of this can just be handled later. It doesn't matter now. Deal with it later in the in the solid waste permitting process or at some other time. But that is not the role of this commission. This commission is tasked with evaluating the effect that this proposed use will have on the surrounding area. The conditional use ordinance specifically requires that you evaluate the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the surrounding area for the uses already permitted. That would include taking account of the oil pipeline running directly through this dumping and grinding site. Yet it was omitted from all of the material that you reviewed. And it's not just this oil pipeline that's the concern. There are questions now as to how Dakota Access will reach that pipeline. Previously, the access would have gone through the site plan that Mueller is now proposing to use to pile up large amounts of ground wood and wood waste. That not only creates a concern regarding access, but as I said before, drainage and potentially a safety concern regarding the Dakota Access Pipeline. I'm not even certain that the Dakota Access is aware of this application for conditional use, and that company may well have something to say about the proposed use that's going into this site. The fact is, this is not a discussion that we should be having for the first time today. It shouldn't be. This should have been put before the planning commission, and the planning commission should have had an opportunity to consider whether it has enough evidence, not empty assurances, but evidence that this is a safe and appropriate use. The planning commission didn't have that evidence before, and you don't have that evidence today, which means that this conditional use permit must be denied. A second issue I just want to call to the attention of the commission has to do with an access easement that's going to necessarily have to be implemented into this site plan. Once again, it's not referenced anywhere in the actual site plan that you have before you, but in order to have this conditional use, Mueller is going to have to actually subdivide this lot because it's not buying the entire legally described parcel. It's only buying the east 450 feet. And because of the fact that the west adjacent lot doesn't have access except through their proposed site plan, there necessarily is going to have to be an additional access easement carved out. Now, you can look right at the requirements for a conditional use permit, and approved plans cannot be changed, modified, or altered, and all work must be done in accordance with the approved plans. The fact is, these are not the plans that Mueller is going to be constructing at site according to. It can't be. There is going to have to be changes to account for this access easement. There are going to have to be changes to account for the Dakota Access Pipeline. With respect to the pipeline, that's a 50-foot easement, there's been no evaluation as to what setback requirements might be appropriate if this operation can be conducted in such close proximity to a pipeline at all. The fact is that information isn't in front of you, you have no evidence to rely upon, and the conditional use permit should be denied. One reference was made during Mr. Cheddar's comments that this doesn't change the proposed use of the site for the reasons I previously mentioned. It most certainly could. The presence of that pipeline will need to change the way that Mueller's operate this dumping site and at least the area in which they are grinding and and storing their wood. There was a question, I believe Commissioner Kipli raised, about whether it would be appropriate to adjust the sunset provision from 10 years to five. I want to point out, no matter what sunset provision is implemented here, once you've allowed for a wood grinding facility like this on this land, there's no going back. We're not going to be able to use that land for agricultural use ever again. The soil will be ruined for that purpose. So this can't be a temporary decision. If we allow Mueller's to conduct this operation for any period of time, there's no turning back. Again, I truly appreciate the commission's attention to this matter. I know that this has been a long process that has required a lot of time, and it is greatly appreciated that that you are closely considering all of the effects of this application. I would ask you today to deny. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prostralo. Mr. Cheddar, any rebuttal? Five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll keep my comments short. First, with respect to the Dakota Access easement, there's no changes to the site plan. The existence of this easement or a telephone easement or a water easement or a neighbor's access easement or neighbor's easement to come in and pick asparagus, none of those easements can be negatively impacted by a change of ownership. None of those easements can be negatively impacted by a change in use. It's a red herring because we've got to comply as the owner of the property with any and all easements and restrictions and limitations placed upon the property. That's true of easements. It's true of conditions placed upon operations by this body. It's of no concern. And as further evidence of that, Mason's comments to you were that it's not something that's evaluated by the planning department. It is it is regulated and controlled by the Public Utilities Commission, and they've issued limitations and restrictions upon the project relative to the various property that it runs through. And with respect to the regional landfill, there were setbacks put in place because of the landfill's excavation of landfill cells. That's the language that's cited in the paragraph. There's a 300-foot setback from where the landfill is excavating to bury waste. That's not happening at this site. Those requirements don't apply. To the extent they do apply, they will be complied with. So I don't think it's inappropriate for this body to act on the conditional use permit as applied. I think that the the issue being raised is is of no moment. Similarly, there's no requirements in the submittals to the county that we we list all of the easements. Oftentimes, they're not known. The process is commonly where landowner A reaches agreement with business owner B for the potential operation of a business on a piece of property. That property is typically not transacted until after this process is completed. Similarly, after this process is completed, business owners and landowners typically don't incur the cost of a survey to identify exactly where is the telephone line buried, where is the water line buried, where is there a private well easement? Those things all come out through the process of following the conditions that are adopted by this body. Furthermore, with the access easement that's raised, there is an approach to the mother parcel from the west off the Wall Lake Oil Road. Again, that's a a fact and an issue that's evaluated through the plating process where the various departments of the county evaluate a proposed replating to ensure that there are no isolated landlocked parcels and that they have appropriate access. Again, that's something that's evaluated through the process. Finally, with respect to the soil degradation issue that was raised in the closing comments, the site south of the of Highway 271st Street is being reverted to ag use. The ag renter of that parcel, I don't know if they've undertaken fall tillage or not, but it's their intention after we remediated the site, cleaned up the site this summer, it's now going to be put back into production agriculture until it's developed for some other future use. So all of these issues that keep being raised by the opponents are failing to both capture the process that the county has implemented and failure to accurately reflect the use and the reality of of the operation and the and the past site. Finally, with respect to, if I can make one last comment, Mr. Chair, in terms of the process being followed, and what I understand has been the county's position relative to the voting, it's our position that the statute makes clear that a appellant from a planning commission granting of a conditional use permit must get two-thirds of this body to overturn the approval by the planning commission below. And I that can be avoided and resolved if this body simply approves of a conditional use permit as amended. It avoids that question ever having to be raised on whether or not the county is appropriately complying with that statute or not. With that being said, I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have and would otherwise echo the the thoughts of appreciation for for all of you in this process.
Thank you, sir. And my apologies to my fellow commissioners. Any questions of Ms. Prostralo? I could have done that before, but okay, seeing none. At this point now, I will open it up for proponent testimony. So if anybody else would like to speak in favor of this conditional use permit, I will give you 10 minutes at this point. Anybody like to speak in favor? You have three minutes.
My name's Abby Murphy. I work for Mueller Pallets. I've been there six, almost six years in December. I answer almost, I would say almost 100% of the phone calls. I've been answering them since we shut down in May. People are mad. I mean, they don't have a free drop-off right now. They don't have a drop-off. They're going to the landfill. I've even had to take my own stuff to the landfill. Same stuff that we would recycle. I was charged more for for CND waste, which is, they're not recycling, they're putting it in a pit and burying it on the landfill. I can tell you with our wood chips here, I have access personally to every single wood chip since 2007 of where the load has gone, how much it was, down to almost every driver. One unfortunately did pass away, so I couldn't reach out to that driver. But we have access to all that information. So I know where every wood chip goes, residential business and ethanol plants. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Just, yeah, if, just, yeah, be ready.
My name's Chad Foddis, and I do work for Mueller Pallets, and there has been quite a bit of concern about increase in truck traffic. I do not track any of the incoming, but I do track all of the outgoing of the wood chips that we do haul. And in 2019, we hauled out 472 loads of wood chips. That'd be equivalent on hauling days of increasing the truck traffic of 1.88 loads per day. That's about all I have to say on that.
Thank you, sir. And if you're up speaking, please make sure you signed in so we have your information. Thank you.
My name is Rebecca Jongling. So it's my family's business. I used to be formerly a Muller until my husband took my hand. But I would just like for you guys to approve this. We've done jobs in town for SDSU, on campus, different places like that, and it hasn't altered what they're planning on building or doing with the land. It hasn't altered any of the neighbors, which just, we want to be a good neighbor, and we will be a good neighbor. I'm hoping to take the company over with my brother someday, and we want to continue our folks' legacy. They have been in this business for 43 years. And I just want to say that, like, if anybody has questions, we have documentation, we follow all the rules, we use DOT, and we will do our best. And hopefully, we can add some more employees on as well because after our yard did close, we have not had some positions be filled, and we're hoping to refill those, and we'll bring that to the community as well.
Thank you.
Good morning. Phil Muller, 3705 South Chris Drive. I've been the grinding supervisor at Mueller Pallets for a number of years. I've been doing the grinding operation since it started 16 years ago. And I've I've watched how vehemently we have followed all the rules, like she said, the DOT. We have file folders that thick full of permits. We've had D A N R out several times. We go to solid waste, the solid waste commissions and all, or all the meetings every year to, like, meet people and find out better ways to efficiently do our stuff. We have, you know, as I said, 16 years of skin in the game, 43 years total as a pallet company. We've been doing this long enough, I think. We've proven ourselves, and we've proven we're a good neighbor, that we're rule-following. There are others that would just set up shop here and then ask for forgiveness later, and we're not like that. That's not in our blood. So with that, that's all I really have to say.
My name is John Brush. I work for Mueller Pallets. I'm actually one of the equipment operators, and I actually own a farm. I have cattle and sheep and horses. We actually use wood chips to soak up the manure and the animal waste. So you could take our wood chips and use that, too. So we're actually recycling it. We're not, it's not going in the landfill, it's not going in the dirt, and it's biodegradable. I mean, we're recycling it, we're repurposing it from where it actually came from in the ground. And as far as the operation goes, we clean up after ourselves. Yeah, we make a mess while we're working, but at the end of the day, we clean up. We try to make the site better than what it was when we got there. And I started working for these guys in April, and I love every minute of my job. They've been great to me. I enjoy going to work. I love what I do. And the people that I've met being on the road and even in our yard in Harrisburg, they appreciate our service. And if worried about the environment and everything else, you can burn trees, and you're going to create more pollution than it would be for us to run our machine. And I'm on the fire department. These guys train us. If we have a problem, we're on it right away. If there's a fire or anything like that, first thing we do is we call the fire department, and then we get our fire extinguishers, and we try to keep it under control. We have any issues or anything like that, we are trained to do that. And as far as weather goes, lightning, we don't work. Lightning strikes our equipment, it's bad. Wind, dust. There's times where Phil, Henry, somebody like that, they called me, they asked me how the wind is. It's a little windy. All right, shut down, go home for the day. That's what we do. We were respectful for other people. We don't like dusting people out. And it's mainly the recycling and keeping the product out of the landfill. It is, it does more good than bad, and that's all I have to say.
I'm Jim Brunz, developer here, Sioux Falls, contractor, also started and run this thing called Catfish Bay out there. So have been through this process on conditional use in different avenues with my business life and and just kind of relating to something what's going on here. We started Catfish Bay. One of the arguments was, we're going to create all this traffic. And when I was in that meeting, standing up there going, all right, Mr. Resident, our road that was coming through that abuts the interstate, 4,000, 5,000 cars a year max, I'm like, what about the 15 million cars a year going down the interstate? It was a tough, tough argument to to deal with. And so when you're looking at this situation, where they're going now versus where they were, the distance from where they're looking at, they're over a half mile to a single residence, looks like over almost a mile to the to the to the home, to the major group of homes out there, long ways away. Traffic on that road, I believe, is 4,000 cars a day or something like that. They're looking at 40, 50 cars a day, less than 1%. So to me, that's kind of a non-issue. If they aren't allowed to be there, the main point is that traffic's still going to be there. It's going to the dump, and it's costing all of us money to go to the dump and getting buried, which is, in the recycling world, not as great a deal. They're a free operation versus having to pay to go to the dump. Grinding and dust and noise, same scenario, right next door, you know, 100 yards away. That's happening with the city theoretically 24/7, 365 a year. So to me, this operation is a non-issue as far as, you know, those types of things. The Sunset Clause gives you in 10 years the opportunity to look back at them saying, geez, were they a good neighbor or a bad neighbor? And so to me, that's with with the millions of dollars they're going to put into this and buying that land, that would scare me as a developer. Now I know that 10 years, you can take this back for me, and I'm going to lose all the stuff I put into it, all this business, all the marketing, making this site viable. And a five-year sunset clause to me is even, makes it even worse to get, to make that money back. The hard surface paving we talked about, again, you've got expensive to do that, and I think with dust control situations, there's ways to to deal with that very easily. Pipeline that they brought up, if you look at the plat, the of this. Pipeline that they brought up, if you look at the plat, the, of this, let me see. Here we go here. So if you look at the plat, right, right down here in the corner, that's, that's the pipeline, isn't it, right there? Very small portion of this property with that pipeline going across. I've developed over a pipeline. You might not know, but if you go out to Village on Louise, I brought Panera Bread to Sioux Falls. Village on Louise had a pipeline that went directly across that property with, with Williams Pipeline. If you go look today, I moved that pipeline. I worked with Williams Pipeline to basically zigzag that pipeline through the parking lot.
Mr. Brunz?
Yes.
Please wrap it up.
Thank you. All right. I just ask that you don't deny this. I think they're a great neighbor, and if not here, where? So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other proponent testimony? We have time for, that's 10 minutes? Okay, we're gonna shut down proponent, we'll go to opponent testimony. Anybody would like to add anything new? Please come forward.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Leigh Ankrins. I'm at 26756, 463rd Avenue, and we presently farm all the ground around, we have a lease to farm all around it, plus we have a lease for next year to farm it, including the property that they're trying to get rid of. Being farmers, we have dealt with the pipeline, let me tell you. I contacted the pipeline directly, and with the easement on there, I talked to Brandon, and he says, "With a, it's a 25-foot easement on either side, and you are not allowed to plant trees, you are not allowed to store anything on there, you're not allowed to put any structures, permanent structures on there." Let's see, what else did he say here? Heavy equipment that vibrates or something, they don't want close to it. So that, in that 50 feet, they're not gonna be able to use that to do any storage or dumping or anything that, per Brandon, from the actual pipeline itself. And as for the access to the farm ground, yes, there is access on the Wall Lake Road, but there's a creek that runs between, through there, so we cannot get to that little subpartial through the access on the west road going through the creek. So we would have to, whoops, sorry, have to have access on 267th Street to get into that property. Right, thank you.
Thank you. Other opponent testimony.
Good morning, Commissioners. Glenn Firstenberg. Couple things I just want to bring up here. First of all, as we know, they're test, they're test, they're having statements about landfill burying wood, landfill, as we know grinds wood. So, and the other thing is, I want to bring up is that Muller Pallets, I, I'm sure they're a good neighbors where they were at. I'm just, I keep bringing this question up, is why don't they go back where they were at? It is still for sale. If they were a good neighbor there, and they had great reviews, sounds like a great place to me. Another thing I want to bring up, we got the picture up here, as you can, I don't know if I can point to that? No, probably not. Anyway, whoop, here, just keep, I'll put that picture right back up. Sorry about that. Or I can do it this way, too. Let's go, okay, here we go. What do we got here? Okay, anyway, if, I can just explain it. Down along where it says 450 feet, towards that, towards right about in the middle, there is an access gate there for Dakota Access Pipeline. I am assuming that when they put that gate there, that they were envisioning the gate, or the driveway from that road coming through there with farmland so they could get to that gate. Outside of that gate, all the way to the west and the south, is wetland. It's a creek. If there has to be access to that gate, it can only come through the acreage there. That's the only place that can come through. It's all wetland and a creek behind there. So if they're gonna be piling wood there, how do they get to that access pipe if there's a problem? There is just no other way. It's a creek and wetland. You can see the green area, it's just, there's no cropland, it's all grass. Second thing I want to bring, or third thing I want to bring up, is that, again, we live out there, I've toured that place personally. We all can sit back and look at plans and drawings, but realistically, until you get a vision of it, you know, we all live out there, we see it. That, that acreage part where they want to put their grinding area, that is a high area. Down by the gate there, that is a low area. All that runoff is going to be going to that area and then down that creek. Then the other thing is that, you know, we, again, we toured the acreage part, there is a house, building, silo, number of other buildings. The house and the garage have slate siding. Slate siding is loaded with asbestos. I just want to make it part of the record that, that asbestos has to be reclaimed by a licensed contractor to be disposed of properly. Also, inside the house, you can, you can certainly see there's lead paint, asbestos flooring, that will all have to be dealt with according to guidelines, except for by the state. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have time for a few more.
Good morning. Chad Hofer is my name. And there's two things I want to talk about. I have a paper here that is the policy of geometric design of highways and streets, American Association of State Highway and Transportation officials. For a semi, they are saying that 80 feet wide is what you need for an approach, so it does not have to go in the other lane. At 35 feet, which is proposed for this approach, that semi, those semis are gonna have to go in that other lane to enter and exit that property. That is a picture I would like to paint for you. Got all the measurements here. This, this is just really a problem, and I would seriously consider you thinking this very thoroughly. And for the opponents, I think maybe they need to put their jeans and boots on and go out there and take a look at what they're getting. Thank you.
Other opponent testimony.
Good morning. I'm Diane Rungy, and I do want to thank all of you guys coming and listening to us. We are pleading and pleading to keep our neighborhood the way it is now. Instead of bringing in another company just to bring more traffic, more clutter on the road, I would invite every single one of you to come out, drive on 41st Street, and then after you pass Highway 17 and Kurt's House, we have built trees. We take pride in our neighborhood, pride in our homes, and I really do think that should be a consideration. Also, one of the gentlemen came up and said that they cleaned up after themselves. So I went there about a week after. So I'm not sure if you can see this or not. So the sign is that we're closed. Look at the piles of wood they left behind, and they were supposed to be gone. So if that was a good neighbor, that they left all their stuff, and they, what, had six months to know that they needed to leave? So I just want to thank you for your time, and please, drive out, see our, our own community. We are pleading for our families, friends, and everybody that we've met since this has happened. Thank you.
So we got about two minutes left. Time for one more opponent.
I know the, Marilyn Quealy, 26680, Day Spring Circle. I know the traffic issue has been beat to death, but just a personal testimonial that I experienced. So it'd be a number of years of my son and I were going to town, it was that dusk, dark, a black garbage bag in the center of the road, and knowing me, I swerve, and I came so close to having a very serious accident with multiple cars involved. It was only by the grace of God that that did not happen, and I don't think it was because of my great driving or anything. So if you just could keep in mind how many possible close calls there have been out there due to refuse on the road, my guess is there's probably been a lot that we've never heard of. Thank goodness, that I know of there hasn't been serious accidents because of that, but, and thank you, I'm with everybody else. Thank you for your time. Thanks for listening.
All righty. One minute left.
Colley Vonless, 46163, 267th Street. Last time I talked about the substation, and their lawyer got up and said that they had talked to East Urban, there was no concerns. I talked to Sioux Valley, they said they worked directly with them, they said they cannot comment, they cannot say there is no concerns, they cannot say we're for it, we're against it. I did, he would not, would not answer any of my questions. The only thing that he would answer me, I said, "If Mueller was there first, would you have built there?" He said, "We would have taken a long, hard look before we did that." So to me, there is a substation and a pipeline there.
All righty. At this point, I am going to close public testimony. Appreciate everybody's time, your comments. I know it's close to many of you, and whether it's the business you own or the, where you live, so we take all that into consideration, at least I do. At this point, I will turn the business over to the Commissioners, allow them to ask questions, make comments, make amendments if they wish. Who wants to start? Commissioner Blindberg.
Thank you. I'm just curious about the, if we can learn some more information about the farmland that would be east of that creek that might not have access from the Wall Lake Road? Is that a concern that we should have discussed at some point?
Mason, you didn't know, or maybe somebody from Highway? What access points there are in that area?
I don't know all of the accesses, but I'll just zoom out here so we can see. So this isn't, this is what the County Planning Office considers an intermittent stream, so it's not always filled with water. And this flows into Wall Lake, or it terminates into Wall Lake. So this access over here is the access, the only access off the highway on this north edge. I'm not sure if there is one on the west edge. I believe they did say that there was one for over here, but as stated at the last meeting, I believe in order for there to be access over here, there would have to be some sort of mutual access for that eastern portion, but I don't know if there's one to the west. Maybe you can comment on that.
I think the question was to the east. Who owns the property to the east? Is that city land, or is...
Sorry, I, I guess, I thought you meant east of the stream.
Yes, that was my question.
Okay.
East of the stream and west of the proposed property? That stretch of farmland there? That stream, I don't think, I'm not a farmer, but I don't know that you could get equipment over that. So I'm curious if the site plan should have reflected how agricultural equipment would access that.
Morning, Commissioners. Jacob Morris, Highway. During the plating process, when a piece of ground is parceled off, we require, when Highway, before Highway signs off, we require access to all parcels that are gonna be impacted by the plating process. In a situation like this, I can speak to what we would look at. The existing approach clearly just serves that particular parcel without access, provided to the farm field to the west. We would either require a permanent access easement across the parcel in question, or we would require a new approach. Our approach standards are five approaches per side of road per mile. In this particular stretch of road, there are currently three, so there is, there is an availability for adding an additional approach. Spacing requirement, we require the approaches to be spaced at 1,000 feet. So if one was to go directly, if you look at where the substation entrance is on the north side of the road, there could be another entrance added about on the fence line between, we'll call it the pasture ground and the farm ground, right at that fence line, they could add another approach and still be within the 1,000 feet requirement.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
Jacob, before you get too far. Commissioner. Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll ask Jacob another follow-up question. So as we're talking about approaches and access permits, that's what we would consider in our current proposal in the conditional use permit conditions. Number four, that the petitioner shall be required to apply for an access permit from the Highway Department prior to operations. And then the next condition is number five, that currently it states that all driveways within the operation shall be gravel-surfaced and then dust control from there. If we wanted to upgrade that or require something further, can you describe what hard surface or paved surfaces, just help us with our definitions, and what, what could be required that you could help enforce as they're going forward with those plans?
Sure. So typically, what we see for approaches throughout the county is, you're either gonna have gravel, asphalt, or concrete in a scenario like this. Our permit requires hard surfacing, whether that be, whether that be gravel or asphalt, and it's up to either a conditional use permit or the property owner to, to decide what's going in there.
So, Mr. Chair, to follow up, so currently, we require it as gravel-surfaced, so just, maybe we're splitting hairs here, but you said as, that's as opposed to asphalt or concrete? Or what, what are those options again? And what would be in the levels of mitigating dust? How would you kind of rank order our options?
So asphalt and concrete, there'll generally be no dust unless that road becomes dirty and isn't, and isn't cleaned on a regular basis. The gravel, the gravel road will obviously allow the most, the most dust and debris to track off, off-site. Dust control will help considerably with that if it's, if it's maintained throughout the summer. Yep?
Thanks. Any other questions? No questions? Commissioner Bennega.
Mason, do you have a couple seconds? With the two other operations that I'm familiar with, ones over by the Vet Cemetery, and the other ones in Worthing, obviously, are there stipulations on the hours of operation or on the days that it can be used?
There is no, the one, specifically to the one in Minnetonka County, there is no number of days that they can grind on the site. That is not a condition. I do believe they, similar to this one, they do have hours of operation where they can be open to the public to accept wood. I do believe it's similar, but I don't think it's the exact same as this one, but.
Okay, thank you.
Stay there. Anything else?
Go ahead.
With the easement for Dakota Access Pipeline, is there any requirement that they be notified of this? Are they a interested party?
No, they, so they, it's, the easement is not a, I guess, we notify based on the legal properties, the legally platted properties in the area, so the easement would not be considered one of those, so they are not notified for our conditional use permit requirements.
I think I see where the pipeline runs, but, I mean, can you?
Yeah, you can kind of see this little indent here. It's essentially what it does, right? In this little.
And it goes all the way to the corner.
And then goes all the way right down here, down out, and then into the landfill, yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Commissioners, Balls in your court.
Well, Mr. Chair, I think functionally, we have a motion on the floor. I'd be prepared to make a substitute motion that would include more amendments, but I'd kind of look to my colleagues, because I guess at least two of us were prepared to pass it with the existing amendments, so I would look to my two other colleagues to see if any of the amendments that kind of came up in natural discussion, especially, I guess what I was considering was any concerns about the driveways and dust control, and then also the sunset period. I'm sympathetic to Mr. Cheddar's argument and some comparisons to other similarly situated operations, but I also think that's completely reasonable and within our discretion. A conditional use permit, we could call it up after one year, after one day, you know, that's within our discretion, but to put a, a fixed timeline on it gives everyone kind of notice that this is, how long it's gonna be, whether it's five years or 10 years. I guess I would just clarify to my colleagues that I'm comfortable with the 12 conditions that we have currently, but would look for any comments from others to see if there'd be an appetite for further amendments and therefore a substitute motion to do that. to see if there'd be an appetite for further amendments and therefore a substitute motion to do that. And I guess I would add, Mr. Chair, seeking some clarification and just the appetite for any amendments, because I think before we would vote on such substitute motion to further amend, I'd probably want the state's attorney to clarify for us that if we come to a two-two vote on that amendment, we'd be right back where we are of kicking the can down the road to our next meeting and having to take up that amendment. So, you can sense that I'm trying to get a sense for my colleagues' opinion on that amendment before we would make it go to a potential two-two tie.
I can address that if you'd... On the five-year CUP, that was in my mind primarily to give some level of assurance to the, all the people that live out there, that noise, dust, traffic, the potential of widening the road, the approaches, all that can be considered, you know, in a very short period of time instead of a 10-year period of time, a five-year period of time. I drive this road frequently, sometimes twice a week in the summer, and I know it very well. To the east of the landfill, it's a beautiful neighborhood, you know, the landfill is very well-bermed and hidden, so you really don't see it there. But I understand traffic, so I called our Highway Department, I talked to Steve Groen, and I called the city of Sioux Falls, I talked to the Director of Public Works, Mark Cotter, who's a friend of mine, and I talked to a lot of people about different aspects of traffic and the landfill, quite honestly. There is no need to widen the road, is what I've been told. The approach, the site distance, the speed, the volume of traffic really makes it unnecessary. The city does require that if a road widening is necessary, and I believe the county has the same approach, or at least it would be my recommendation that we would, that any cost to widening the road at that point for a turning lane, that type of thing, be at the expense of the benefiting business, in this case, Muller Pellets. But it was pointed out that if we required for Muller, that we'd have to require it for the city also. So, at this point, I mean, in a five-year period, I can see where we can, if traffic has increased to the point, having that five-year CUP gives me assurance that we will look at this and do our due diligence to make this work. When it comes to the city and the landfill, I asked about tree grinding out there. Learned a few interesting things. It's incidental to their operation. Somebody brings a load out to the dump and they have some wood in there, it's just hauled over by the city to their tree grinding operation. They haul their ground wood out to the same place that Muller does, it's all to Chancellor and sold to Poet. They do that about five or six days a month, they grind trees five or six days a month, and they have a few loads that go to Chancellor. So, and then this isn't competing with the city, the city really doesn't want the trees or the wood, they just get it and they don't want to bury it, so they grind it on their own and they do the exact same thing that Muller does, and they haul it to the exact same place. Much to my surprise, I found out that tree grinding was going on about half a mile from my house for quite some time in a gravel pit operation. Wasn't even aware of it, so just kind of, that played in the back of my mind also. I do support a five-year conditional use permit, so this can be looked at for the reasons I outlined. I also think that when it comes to this entrance, whether it be the width of the approach or the hard surface, I'm comfortable with gravel at this point. Again, it'll be known in time that if we need to make additional use permits on this, that we will be able to do that quicker rather, or sooner rather than later, so I would support it.
Chairman?
Commissioner?
Thank you. I would continue with opposition to this site. I appreciate Muller Pellets and the business that they provide. I think they're a great organization and provide a service to the county and the area around us. So, I'm not opposed to that, I'm just opposed to this location. I know I stated a lot of my opinions last week, so I don't really want to repeat information. But I do, I struggle to approve adding and aggravating the issue that's already there. Just in the last week, I think there was a mattress in the middle of the road going out on the way to the landfill, and that's a very common thing. And I understand that we want to try to allow Muller Pellets to regulate the loads that will be coming out, but I think it's inevitable that there will be an additional debris on the road, obstacles on the road, and with the amount of construction traffic, the amount of dirt that's already on the road from the landfill entrance, the amount of residential traffic that goes in and out, garbage trucks, you know, accessing the homes, all the deliveries that take place, all of the school buses that go through, I just, I can't in good conscience aggravate that issue by adding more potentially unsecured loads going past all of those on the way out to the landfill. My concern is not as much with the large trucks that will be accessing the plant in Chancellor. It sounds like that's not going to be very frequent, and I don't know that our roads are equipped for those loads, but that's out of my expertise. So, my main concern is just that section from Old Highway 17 out past the landfill. I just, I can't in good conscience move forward with that. If the majority is going to do that, one of my questions would be, what will happen when the inevitable trees or branches or wood debris ends up on the road? Because I think the people in that area have received different feedback at different points. It used to be more that we would call the landfill if we saw something on the road, and then it was, you called the sheriff, and I know our sheriff's staff probably has enough on their plate. I'm not sure if we can give direction at this point, or if that's out of this purview, but it's inevitable that the road, if the site plan, from what I understand, where the grinding will take place is a dirt, they don't want gravel back by the grinding equipment. So, it will be dirt where every arborist and every resident who brings wood out will drive through a mud, or I'm sorry, dirt area, potentially mud, and then back onto that county road. So, I'm not sure what our, what our recommendations can be, how much of that. I don't like adding a lot of red tape to businesses, but I also think that we should honor the input of the citizens that are here and the landowners in that area, and at least give them some guidance on if this goes through, what can they expect.
Mason, can you talk about, you know, if there's debris, dirt, or maybe even Jacob, you know, who gets the, who gets called and who cleans it up?
So, currently, I guess I'll speak to the landfill that's existing. If things are found in the ditch, typically the Highway Department will get those calls, but the Highway Department, I've been told by Steve Groen, tells the city to go out there since they control the landfill, to go and clean up the, whether it's debris or trees or whatever on the, on the road. And one of the conditions of approval for the landfill was that they couldn't allow debris to leave the site. So, they are required, if debris does leave the site, to go out and pick it up. So, if that is a concern, maybe that could be a condition that if debris is found along the highway... The only problem with that is difficult to enforce with it being close to the landfill. Who brought it out? Is it going to be the people to the landfill? Is it going to be the people to Mueller? When would Mueller be required to go out and pick it up? When would the city be allowed, or required to go out and pick it up? But that condition is part of the landfill permit, that they, it's technically worded that they, that any debris that leaves the site, they are required to pick up. So, that is interpreted that if there is debris on the roads, they are required to pick it up, so.
Okay, does that help?
I'm not sure. If I were to encounter an obstacle on the road that looked like it was a tree product, who would I call? Because there's not enough room to swerve and stay on the road in that area.
I think Highway Department gets most of those calls, since it's on the highway, but I'll let Jacob talk to that maybe a bit more.
Yeah, I would say if you, if you see an obstacle that's on the road and it's a safety hazard, call Highway, we'll come out and, we'll come out and address the situation. If it's garbage in the ditch, you can still give us a call, but we would consider that the city's responsibility, depending on what type of garbage it was.
And if I could ask a follow-up of Jacob?
Please.
What about if there was dirt similar to what happens outside of the landfill? Like, if you drive out there, quite often it's thick caked on dirt from vehicles that are exiting the landfill heading east.
Yeah, so, we would still be, I would say us or, or planning is who you would call for the situation like that. We have the capability to clean the roadway, but before we went on clean it, we would request that the entrance, the entrance leading up to that be cleaned as well, so that we weren't going to have a continuing problem on the roadway itself by the entity that was making the mess.
So, does that lead into Commissioner Kipley's thoughts about the surface? I don't know how, you mentioned one surface is better than the other for maintaining or removing dirt.
If you're looking at reducing the amount of dirt that gets on the road, the only way to really clean gravel, once it gets muddy, is to remove and put down new gravel. If you have asphalt or concrete, you can, you can sweep it, scrub it, and it'll be clean at that point.
Thank you.
Good. I'm going to hand it a note here, so Mr. Cheddar had requested that the board notice and accept other filings with the other conditional use permits that Muller had brought before the Planning Commission, and that they be included in this hearing, as referenced in or included the requests in. We have not heard this request before today, and I will leave it up to the commission if they want to include it, but I would suggest that, or I guess, look to the opponents, and probably Ms. Prostralo, would you want, or would you be willing to accept the prior filings from the prior conditional use permits?
Commissioners, without reviewing them in detail at this point, I have, can't say that I'm in a great position to comment one way or the other. I think in one of the initial applications that were submitted, I recall reviewing meeting minutes, I was talking about Mr. Cheddar meeting separately with certain planning commissioners, which creates a concern for me as to whether that's appropriate, and might be one reason for the commission to consider whether that is appropriate, to have all of that incorporated into this decision. I think at this stage, I would have to object, just because I don't feel like I have enough information.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any thoughts on including the prior filings from the prior conditional use permits? Commissioner, I'm going to talk, look to Commissioner Kipley, you're the liaison to that department. It is a strange request. I, myself, I'm inclined not to include them, just because they're not parcel to this, but I'll look to your expertise.
Well, Mr. Chair, I think it's contemplating any further proceedings that would go beyond, as we're not necessarily the final decision-makers. So, in theory, a decision by this body could be appealed to the Second Circuit Court, and what I think we're just analyzing there is if that were to occur, what would be part of the official record of our proceedings that in theory, a judge would be reviewing, and the state's attorney or representative can correct me if I'm wrong there. So, essentially, we're just, we would just be taking notice that all of these other proceedings occurred. I'm not sure that they wouldn't be able to get in those elements that they would need to at the Second Circuit Court level. It is just an odd situation that we kind of have had, is it three iterations of this? So, they're technically different, you know, our conditional use permit numbering system, they're separate filings and whatnot. I don't know that it helps or hurts to take notice of those other than that they all have been part of our record as a body. I don't know if the state's attorney has a better explanation, but I'm guessing you're going to defer to us as a, more of a policy question on whether to take notice of other proceedings.
Please.
Mr. Chair, Eric Bog with the State's Attorney's Office. Yeah, my interpretation of Mr. Cheddar's request is essentially for this board to take judicial notice, per se, of those additional filings. I think his phrasing was all additional filings from the previous conditional use permit applications. Without knowing exactly what those are, I did confirm with the Planning Director that that request had not been previously made to today. So, without knowing those items, I recommended to the chair that we seek the input from the opponents. I think we've already heard that without further clarification, they object. I think it's inappropriate to add them to the official record. I think to the extent they are public records, you're correct, the court could look at those, review those in any judicial proceedings, but for us to add them to the appeal record today on this proceeding, I think maybe is inappropriate.
I think, I think I'm persuaded by that. I guess why, I was just coming back to, these have all been public meetings, and to the extent we've made any comments, or the minutes, they're all recorded. So, I think they could be brought in if needed for any testimony purposes in another proceeding. So, I think, I think we can pass on that option, would be my position, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments? Alrighty, so we're going to not include any prior conditional use permit findings or filings in this process.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I guess I would describe it as we are making any determination on possible further amendments here and final passage or denial on the merits of the hearings we have heard on this proposal. Of course, I think as members here, we take into context prior similarly situated proposals, and we have past precedents to guide us. So, in some ways, all of our past planning and zoning and things come, come in some sense into our just experience and judgment, but we will, the evidence that was presented to us is kind of the merits of the decision. Mr. Chair, if you'd entertain a substitute motion to amend, I would make a substitute motion to amend what we have as Condition 10 to strike 2033 and replace with 2028 to effectively make it a five-year sunset, and that's my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to change the conditional use permit from a 10-year to a five-year. Roll call vote, please.
Kipley?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kipley, or Karski?
Aye. And I'm going to back up, just so I don't make any mistakes here. The prior stuff, kind of did by concurrence, but does that require any formal action? Include?
Thank you. To the extent that that requires a determination from the chair, I think that has already been made, but if you want to make it more official, that request is denied, that certainly won't hurt the record any.
I'm okay the way it is, but if you guys want to go on record and formally deny it, I'll leave that up to you.
It would have required some affirmative action by at least you as the chair, if not a majority of the body, so to take notice of that. So, I think by doing nothing, you've effectively denied, would be my interpretation.
Good. Alrighty, so we have a motion and a second, any other amendments?
I guess I'm looking to my colleagues to see if there are any other amendments that they would think be necessary.
I would like to propose that we amend the fifth condition to, we haven't approached that officially yet, I don't believe, to add it... to add it to a gravel, or from a gravel to a asphalt surface.
So, just for clarity, if you don't mind, Commissioner Blainberg?
That all driveways within the operation shall be asphalt surfaced, as opposed to gravel.
Hard surfaced.
Hard surfaced, yeah, thank you.
I'll approve that. It's a second.
I have a motion and a second to, any length or just the approach, or?
I'm I'm not sure what the, the length isn't spelled out in here, so I'm assuming that our, between our highway and planning and zoning.
The entire amount that was going to be gravelled, is that, so you want to replace the entire amount that was gravelled to be hard surfaced?
I would like to, yeah, update that verbiage in the fifth point, and I I'm not sure that this will have an impact on the applicant, because I seem to remember hearing that they weren't in favor of gravel to begin with, but I could be wrong on that. But I would, I would just like to be able to do what we can to mitigate the dirt on the road, the mud on the road.
Any comments?
Can we?
When I ask somebody a question, I say you're free to do that.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Cheddar on what their attitude is on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Certainly don't, won't resist vehemently this effort. I would ask you to temper it a little bit, because of the growth and the changing of where we're operating and grinding, based upon what, how the yard is being used, used. Gravel on driveways within the site allow for greater flexibility. You can take up gravel, change the, change, you know, in terms of the distance of that of that approach. So I would propose that you, the amendment reflect 100 feet, or 150 feet is asphalted, but then it gives us the flexibility within the site. If it is dirty, it might be less expensive to take up the gravel and then put down new gravel than to replace asphalt with the heavy equipment turning in that in that area as well.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would just add that 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 seems consistent with some of the guidance we got from Jacob of being able to clean at least some fixed set portion of a driveway or entrance to help alleviate those vehicles as they're going out onto the the main highway. So I don't know that it would have to be the whole driveway, but some fixed amount. If we can add that to the motion or clarify that, I I would be open to that.
Could we ask first half input on that? I am definitely out of my area of expertise.
I don't, I don't have a a complete understanding of how long that actual approach is.
The pink?
Yeah, the pink, the pink driveway.
Well, the whole thing's 1,200 feet long, so I'm gonna guess it's at least 600 feet.
I can probably measure it quick.
I guess, Jacob, what would you suggest would be a reasonable amount of pavement, hard surface, to get, keep mud from going out onto the highway, I think is the intent of the motion?
I would say somewhere between 100 and 200 feet, maybe 150 feet would be, would be appropriate.
Okay.
I would take the higher, and just as we were discussing this, I was just thinking through.
So 150 feet, you'd amend your motion for 150, or?
Was that the top, or did you say 200? You said 150? Yeah, I guess, just based on my experience driving by the landfill, it's paved all the way, and yet there's still a significant amount of mud on the road regularly, so I would do whatever the maximum you would recommend.
I don't think there's a way to entirely prevent mud from leaving the site. You could possibly require a construction entrance, which is what we require on construction projects, and that's larger rocks to knock off mud and dirt off tires before entering onto the roadway. That that's been proven proven effective. Usually there, there are larger rocks, much, much larger than what a gravel roadway would be, and that would effectively take mud off the tires prior to entering the pavement. That would be something that would happen prior to the asphalt driveway.
So you would recommend the construction approach more than a hard surface?
In advance of, in advance of the asphalt itself.
Okay, so we would say, for the sake of the motion, that all driveways within the operation shall be hard surfaced for 150 feet, and then this construction approach surfaced with larger rocks for how many feet?
And I think what Mr. Cheddar was trying to say was, the the main driveway into into the site, 150 feet would be hard surface. They want some flexibility within the site in order to put gravel entrances, move them here and there. And then prior to the asphalt, if you would put a construction entrance, and I can provide, I can provide a detail for what would that that would look like, but between where the the majority of the work is taking place and the asphalt itself.
Commissioner Blainberg, before you make your motion, can I comment?
Yes, thank you.
I'm I'm perfectly fine with 150-foot hard surface paved going in, but we have to realize, too, that this isn't just trucks coming in, it's grandma bringing the tree branches from her yard, and having a construction entrance in rocks that big is going to prevent most of the public from being able to access this drop-off. So I would not support that part of it, but I would support the hard surface.
Okay.
Just for your information.
I wouldn't drive a car over it. I would drive a pickup truck over it.
Okay, well, they do provide a valuable service to the residents, so we would need to have a, I mean, you, when you drive that road, you will see cars pulling trailers loaded with trees. Okay, thank you for that.
Are you willing to amend your motion to be 150 feet of hard surface?
Yes, that is my motion.
Commissioner Benega, are you willing to second that motion?
As long as we're playing Let's Make a Deal, yeah, I'll second it.
Trying to keep it moving.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries. So it's an amended motion to the, I think, the fifth provision of the conditional use permit.
All right, anything else?
Mr. Chair, I I would say I'm satisfied with the amendments, and I'd be prepared to make, I guess we're on to a new motion to approve, but before I do that, I guess I'd ask the state's attorney, can we just have one quick explanation before we make our final approval, and make sure we understand what a two-two tie results in?
Sure. Again, Eric Bog, State's Attorney's Office. Let me take it a step back further, and maybe as much for Kim and the records as anything. I think the previous two motions that have passed have now amended the pending motion from last meeting.
Okay.
So that we don't require another motion and second, because that motion is still on the table. It's now just been further amended.
Okay.
Should, however, that that vote result in a tie again? Because now it's a slightly different version of the motion than happened at the 17th meeting. My interpretation under seven, eight, 18, that we would require, now having received a tie vote again, that would have to kick it to the next meeting. Had it been unchanged, I think then that question would, or that motion would simply die. That was a clarification I sent to the parties last evening. It wasn't the CUP that would die, it's just that motion would fail, and we'd have to move on to some other motion, because our ordinance requires you to affirmatively vote to either approve, overrule, or amend, and so it can't simply pass by inaction, it takes an actual majority vote of this body. That would be the other thing that I would point out for the record, that respectfully disagree as an interpretation for this body, that this board is not acting as a board of adjustment. Our ordinance is very clear that the Board of Adjustment is actually the Planning Commission, not this body. The Board of Adjustment only hears appeals of decisions made by the Planning Director, not by the Planning Commission itself. So the Planning Commission made the decision to issue the CUP that's been appealed to this body, and this body then, under statute, makes that decision by a simple majority, not a two-thirds vote, as previously argued. So, is that?
That that's very helpful, and so I would be prepared for the chair to to call the question on the motion that stands before us.
So if you're calling the question, we have to vote on, moving forward to vote on the amendment.
Correct.
The motion. So we have to vote on calling the question before we can vote on the, so if you want to rescind your calling the question, I can move forward with the roll call vote on the amended conditional use permit.
I'll retract any statement that put a bump in the road here. I, yes, I I'm just clarifying that that we do have a valid motion on the floor, you don't need a new motion from me.
So with that said, then, any additional comments by commissioners? I will. This has been, as I said last week, challenging for me. You know, the term was, is this appropriate for the requested use? A mile east of here, I'd say no. After driving out there again, and making phone calls, talking to the sheriff, talking to the Public Works, talking to the Highway Department, really searching for the right answer, I I will support this conditional use permit. I like the fact that we have five years on it, you know, just for assurance to the neighbors that we are going to be watching what's going on. I'm certain that Mueller Palatz is going to be a good neighbor out there, but, you know, trust but verify, I guess. So I'm for, I'm okay with moving forward on this. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Kipley.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg?
No.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries, three to one.
We are going to take, for the sake of Tony, we're going to take a five-minute break, so he can put a little notice up, give everybody a chance that wants to leave, opportunity to leave, and then we'll start again here at 10:47.
Number seven, the second reading, a public hearing to consider rezoning, 2306, rezoned a current U.S. state addition from A1 to, add to rural residential.
Kevin.
Good morning.
Gave it up for Mason.
Yes, I'm Kevin Hookman from the County Planning Department. This item is a rezoning request that was originally received for six-lot subdivision three miles west of Sioux Falls. Since the first reading and publication of this item, staff received a written withdrawal of the rezoning application request, and therefore, there is no longer any decision that needs to be made. But since it was something that was required to be put on the hearing, that's why we're still here.
Okay. I'll still take public comment, if anybody wants to comment on this item that's requested withdrawal. Seeing no comment, since there's, do we have to take action? Do we need a vote on something that's withdrawn? Okay, since it's withdrawn, we don't have to take any action then, okay? Moving on, number eight is our Family Visitation Center presentation, Carol Wolter. Carol, oh.
Don't get Carol, I'm so sorry. My name is Jolene Thompson, I'm the Director of Services at the Family Visitation Center, so I'll be doing the presentation today. First of all, thank you so much for having me, thank you for your continued support of the Family Visitation Center. We desperately appreciate it and need it. Family Visitation Center has been in Sioux Falls since the year 2000, so we are in year 23 now. Very happy to be able to support the community in this way. I always tell the families, as they come in to use our services, you're the, you're the place, we're the place that you really don't want to be. We're the service that you really don't want to have to use. But yet, it's, I know it's a blessing for our families that we are here in the community. We still run into people that have no idea what the Family Visitation Center is or does, but the fact that we can provide safe supervised visits for children and families to stay connected in a meaningful way, and in hopefully a way that gets them closer to the end goal, which is not using our services, and being able to parent on their own or co-parent with the other party successfully is really why why we're here, and why we're in the in the community. I think some of the biggest changes for us in the last couple of years, as we we moved our locations, Avera was I think some of the biggest changes for us in the last couple of years as we moved our locations, Avera was generous and let us come under their wing and into one of their buildings. So we were able to save a lot of money that way because we don't have to pay rent in that building. And so it was a huge cost savings for us to be able to do that. Still have the need that still arises. We are still seeing what I will call COVID-related mental health issues. Families coming to us saying, we were all good. We were good. And then when COVID hit, like things started to go downhill and they just haven't gotten better. Or people that had addiction issues maybe overcame those addiction issues, and then when COVID hit, those addiction issues kind of flared back up. The increase in mental health, I've been at the Family Visitation Center for 11 years, and the increase in mental health in the last four to five years is just astronomical. When I first started, we saw a lot of alcohol misuse, some substance misuse, and then it really amped up to more meth misuse. And now I will say, mental health has the stronghold in the families that are utilizing our services. Along with that comes some obvious alcohol addiction issues also. But the mental health piece is just astronomical to me. The families that come in and were very functioning families until just two or three years ago. And then whatever issues they have kind of hit the forefront when COVID hit, and we're still dealing with those. We did, I looked back, we did, maybe I would do five to 10 intakes a month pre-COVID. And it is rare that I don't do five intakes a week now for just our private pay clients, not our child protection clients, but just our private pay clients. We're doing at least five a week. I'm matching 10 families a month probably. And to try and get them into our building, getting them to see their kids quickly because obviously they want to see their kids right away. And when that has to take a while because I don't have space or we're working with time constraints because they have jobs and they can only, you know, manage a couple nights a week. And if the other party can't manage those nights a week, it gets very challenging for us to be able to work those in and things like that. But it's imperative that these children get to see their families and that these adults get to see their children. For some of our families, that's the only thing that holds them on. We have a past parent that is a huge benefactor, a financial benefactor of ours, and he visited his children here maybe two months. But he says all the time, those two months were critical in making sure I didn't do anything stupid during those two months until we could get this figured out. And I want to make sure that other parties have that same ability to be able to see their children during difficult circumstances, whether that's two months or whether that's six to 12 months. So the support that the county gives us goes to helping provide that funding for those private pay families that come into us because they can't afford what it would cost them without additional funding. And so we have kept our rates at $50 an hour for four years now. We have not raised rates. And we don't want to raise rates because $50 is a lot of money to come in every week. And so the continued funding that we get from you helps to offset that cost, so we appreciate that very much. Does anybody have questions for me?
Chairman, I don't have a question. I just have a thank you as liaison for the Family Visitation Center. This year I've gotten to spend time getting a little more familiar with the service that they provide. So Carol and Jolene and their staff do a great job with limited resources. They really provide a very valuable service to families in crisis. And just pass on our thanks, if you could, to your team. We appreciate what they do.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. Moving on. We also have a presentation from Lutheran Social Services, Jay Marchand.
Yes, thank you. And I want to echo, I appreciate just the time to hear us and the energy it takes to hear the wide array of what you hear up here. And so thank you for, excuse me, a few minutes to hear from us as well. So my name is Jay Marchand. I'm the director of reentry services, which is within Lutheran Social Services. We run a program called the Family Violence Project, which we've received funding from the county since 2019. Prior, that was with the Compass Center, and we took that programming over in 2019. I was not able to make it last year to update you, so I've got kind of two years' worth of information and updates on where things stand. So our programming works with individuals that have used power and control abuse in their families, in their relationships, partnerships. Unfortunately, we've seen a very large increase in the need for this services, and the funding that we receive from the county echoes what we're hearing at the Visitation Center. It really helps to offset costs for the individuals to come here. I wish we could do it for free and to get everyone in there, but we can't. And so support from you all really helps us to make it manageable for our clients to get there. So when we look at this type of work, we have really four pillars that we look at for a quality program. Assessment, we have action, accountability, and accommodation. So I just want to briefly go through how we're meeting those and what that means for our clients and our community. So with the assessment, really trying to get an individualized response and recommendation that is sent back to the courts for what an individual should follow through to help stop the behaviors that we're seeing. So we get the majority of our referrals from the courts down the hall here. They refer them to us, and then we meet with them for a lengthy process. Part of that process also looks at risk. What is their future risk? And we attach a number to that to help us identify, could this, will this potentially happen again? So back in 2021, at that point in time, we had assessed 269 individuals. And as you'll see on the screen, unfortunately, we are up to 768 individuals total now that we've assessed. So that number has gotten drastically bigger. And 61% of those individuals would be classified at high risk of reoffense. So really, we're seeing and getting the people that we need to get that are at risk of using this behavior again, which in turn continues that cycle of violence and disruption in the family. When we look at action, another part of our programming is, after the assessment, we have a lot of people that have to come to group. And we use an evidence-based program called Bringing Peace to Relationships. This requires individuals to show up one time a week, and they have to pass 24 steps. It's not just show up and pass. It's show up, have your work done appropriately, and pass. Most people can get through it 24 weeks, 29, 30 weeks is normally what we see. At this point in time, we have 13 different sessions that are offered. These are offered throughout the week, different times of the day. We're going to try to catch our overnight shift individuals. We're going to have later nights if you're working until five or six. Telehealth, you name it, we offer it to them. When I came here in 2021, we had 55 people in group, and right now we're at 109. That number goes between 100 and 130 people in group at any given point in time. Accountability. If you're familiar with the cycle of domestic violence, you're familiar with the offender side of things. A lot of times, it can be very difficult to hold them accountable and for them to be accountable as well. I didn't do it. It wasn't that big of a deal. She's blowing this out of proportion. And so a big part of us is to work along with supervising officers, the courts, if they're involved, to help ensure that accountability is happening and they're following through with what has been ordered. So a big part for us is that when the judge says, go get your assessment, we need to make sure that they schedule their assessment, show up to their assessment, and follow through with what the judge ordered them after that assessment. Right now, we have 84% of the people that are ordered actually call to get their assessment scheduled. That's great, but we want to know how many actually show up because it's easy to call and get on a book, not as so easy to show up. So of those, 82% are attending their appointments. So we're seeing a good chunk, and when you think of this population, sometimes the buy-in can be difficult. 82% are attending their appointment and 72% enroll in their recommendation. So we're pretty happy with that. We just met with the judges on Friday, and we're seeing some good progress there as well. Finally, 67% of individuals have completed our group. That's up from 59% when I was here in 2021. So we're seeing progress with people getting through the group and the intended behavior changes we hope to see as well. Finally, for a program like this to really be successful, we need to accommodate our clients and not just be hardliners. We need to find some middle ground with them as well. So like I said, the funding that we receive from the county helps with the sliding fee scale, so we're able to make the cost of group more affordable for individuals that are referred to us. We have groups in person via telehealth, all times and days of the week and throughout the day. We do have two groups that are specific for women that have offended, and then the other 11 are for the men that have offended. We also take into consideration any sort of language barriers. So we currently have a Spanish-speaking group and a Swahili-speaking group. Those are some populations we've seen more of lately. So our goal with the accommodation piece of things is to really remove any barriers. So the only thing stopping you from coming is you. We're not going to be the excuse or the reason that you couldn't make it. So that's a lot of information really fast, but I just wanted to give you a snapshot of what we're doing. So appreciative of the support we've had from you all for these years. Any questions?
Go ahead.
Thank you for that briefing. I was just curious, do you receive referrals from any other sources or are they strictly from the Second Circuit?
So we have referrals. It could be self-referral. It could be before they even get to court, try to be ahead of the game. Child protection, parole, probation, federal, excuse me, kind of everyone across the board.
Thank you.
And my question, I'm in my mind equating this maybe inappropriately to, you know, Alcoholics Anonymous, you go through the program. But what about if you, to keep them from reoffending, is there a way for them to call up and say, hey, you know, I'm worried I'm falling back into old patterns and I really would like to jump in somewhere?
So we always have, we always say, once you're done, you're always welcome back at no charge for you, so you can always come back to the groups. A lot of what we do is very intentional relationship building therapeutically, so a lot of us will get texts or calls from our clients that are past giving us updates. So it's a process, and I think you're making a very fair comparison with addiction. We might see slip-ups, but what are we doing to progressively get better each day?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Moving on. Susan, third quarter briefing on, okay, let me start over. Briefing on the third quarter 2023 American Rescue Plan expenditures, finance and budget officer.
Good morning. Susan Beeman with the Auditor's Office. We are preparing to file our third quarter report to the U.S. Treasury for our American Rescue Plan expenditures. And just wanted to brief you on those as we have been doing in the past. For this third quarter, we spent just under $902,000. Accumulated spending to date is just over $20.2 million, and that leaves roughly $17.2 million left to spend. We're continuing to be on track to have things fully expended by the end of '25. We continue to reevaluate those numbers every quarter to ensure we're on target for that. For this quarter, there was one new project within here. Human Services had some mortgage assistance that was provided in accordance with policy. With that, I'll just ask you if there's any questions.
Questions for Susan. We trust you. Thank you, Susan. Appreciate the update. All right. authorize the chairperson to sign the resolution to delete structure 50-100-066 from NBI, which stands for what Jacob tells us.
Morning, Commissioner Jacob Morris, Highway. The NBI system is the National Bridge Inspection Standards. The state of South Dakota is required to keep track, and they ask us to help with that process. Every two years, we inspect all of the structures within Minnehaw County. We do half a year, and that's split by the interstate, east and west. These two structures no longer fall under the jurisdiction of the National Bridge Inspection Standards because we have spaced them apart to where they're no longer a concern for vehicles based on how heavy of loads go on the roadway. So say if one were to collapse, it wouldn't be as big of a deal if a bridge collapsed, which would be a lot larger safety hazard. That's why they no longer fall under this requirement.
So a bridge is no longer a bridge.
Bridge is no longer a bridge.
And you're saying these two structures, you're referencing item number 12 also tonight, I imagine. So we'll take them one at a time. We need a motion and a second to delete this. Oh, any public comment? Looking for a motion and a second. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion to delete the structure. Roll call, vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 12, Jacob already briefed us on. Any public comment on item 12? It's just another structure. I don't know how far from the other one.
About a mile and a quarter.
Okay. Any public comment? Look for a motion from the commission.
Move approval to delete the structure.
Second.
Motion a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Kipley.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries. Number 13 was removed from our agenda. We'll move on to 14. Authorize the chair to sign the construction manager at-risk contract for the Juvenile Justice Center. Tyler Clatt, good morning, Dr. Clatt.
Good morning, Tyler Clatt, Commission Office. The agreement before you is to authorize the chair to sign the construction manager at-risk contract for the Juvenile Justice Center. There's actually two different documents that make up this total agreement. One is the A-133, which essentially sets up the relationship between the county and the contractor, who is Henry Carlson in this case. The second piece is the A-201 document, which sets out kind of the general conditions for how construction will operate while being built. Just for your information, the A-133 will ultimately be amended once the commission hears and potentially approves the guaranteed maximum price. But at this time, it's just to establish these two documents and their relationships that entail, are entailed within them. Also, I'd want to point out that part of this is to pay Henry Carlson, and it's part of the entire funding structure, pay for Henry Carlson for some of the pre-construction work that they did prior to the design work that is ongoing right now. So again, I would ask you to authorize the chair to sign these agreements.
All right. Questions for Tyler. This is moving our program forward for this construction. Bid letting still January, February?
I think so. It might be, you know, it could leak into March. There's potential that you may see requests to maybe buy some materials earlier than either even the GMP being approved. Just based on market conditions and availability and kind of lead times that the construction operators anticipate. But yeah, early of '24 is bidding, and then the intent is to break around April, between April and June.
Okay. Other questions? Look for public input. Anybody here to comment on number 14? Look for a motion from the commission. I would make a motion to approve the construction manager at-risk contract.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, we're at the opportunity for public comment portion of our commission meeting. If anybody's here for public comment, please make sure you signed in and address your comments to the commission as a body. Anybody here for public comment? All righty. No, please.
I don't know if this is the time, but I just want to thank you guys all.
Your name, please.
I'm sorry. I'm Galen Scott, and I live south of Valley Springs. And I'm here because hopefully my husband and my son are out harvesting, maybe. We've been working hard at it. And our family has been farming our ground since 1886, and my husband is the fourth generation, and our son is the fifth generation. And we also have a grandson on the farm, and he's the sixth. I'm here to say thank you for passing the ordinance, the setbacks for the CO2 pipeline. Saying thank you seems like not enough, but it's our future. Our grandsons, our granddaughters, and generations of us landowners. And I just want to thank you again. And some might say that we're against ethanol. But we're not because my husband and I have shares in an ethanol plant, and it's a great product, great. And we're so proud to be part of that ethanol plant. And other people I would like to thank for the excellent job is attorney Alex Hagan defending the PUC ordinance, the state attorney Eric Burke, and Scott Anderson with the planning and. and zoning staff. Thank you again.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, it's been a little bit since I've been down to see you guys, so I was watching the August leader.
Sarah, we need your name.
Oh, Sarah Coop, and I live in Sioux Falls, and I try to smile, so. I saw something concerning in August leader here today, I'm seeing LGBT now has a venue in Sioux Falls, and my concern is, is that since they've evolved their lifestyles around sexual intercourse, that we do not want our children going into these venues unescorted, and I'm not sure what your zoning is or what responsibilities you have for that business or for that venue to be taking part in the down, in the landscape of Sioux Falls, but I do worry that a population that, in a Princeton study, said had a thirty-two percent pedophilia rate in a three percent population, that they are not operating a venue where stripping is happening, or a venue to where pornography is being distributed to minors. And we had a parade here, oh, a couple months ago, to where I felt the law was violated, there was an individual who had been augmented in the chest, completely feminized, and was walking topless down in the street with a bunch of children watching, and I feel that I have laws in my state on this, I feel that they should be enforced, and I'm seeing that there's a venue now, and I'm going, I have no problems with what you want to do, as long as it's being done with adults, and I'm not seeing that there's any kind of regulation happening to make sure that minors are not going into this venue, and that inappropriate things that we have laws on are not being done in front of these children. So I am asking you guys if you guys could pay attention to that, and to err what I feel is on the best side of our children, which is to stop promiscuous behavior and promiscuous values from being disseminated to our children. So thank you very, very much for your time, I appreciate you guys doing what you do, but I saw this and I was like, does our planning committee know about this, and what our state laws are on it? Because pornography, you can't give to a minor, they can't buy a Playboy, they can't do any of that, and none of them can enter a strip club, and we have a group of people in our community who seem to feel that that is unreasonable of us to have concerns over. So I appreciate it if you guys could look into that, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here for public comment? All right. Commission Liaison reports. Nobody's working?
Mr. Chair, we had a, actually, a very short Planning Commission meeting last, I don't know if it was because the Vikings were playing, we, Monday night football, everybody had to get home, but we had, it was only about thirty minutes, we had just a few conditional use permits that were on the consent agenda, so I don't anticipate any of those getting appealed, but to give this body a heads up, we did approve a first draft of a new ordinance regulating shipping containers and how they would basically be used as storage containers on people's property, basically classifying them as an accessory building unto themselves so that you can only have so many of those per acre of land, et cetera. So that will, before that can be actually enacted, that will come to this body, and then also a reminder that we have our joint jurisdiction meeting at five o'clock today with the city, so we'll see you again soon.
How will we forget?
Okay.
Commissioner.
Yes, I was able to go to a staff meeting for the museum yesterday, and just wanted to share what I had learned, that as we already know, they're very busy, they are planning events for Halloween, and anticipating that with the cold weather, that that might have a higher turnout, and just the number of educational opportunities that they're providing to kids in the county, I can't begin to quote the numbers, but I know there's ten events next week, and I can't remember beyond that, but they're very busy traveling all over to present educational and historical opportunities to our kids.
Thank you, Commissioner. Tomorrow, I am attending the LINK Board Meeting, I think from ten to eleven thirty, and eleven thirty, I'll be attending the Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting, so, yeah, about an extra three and a half hours of meeting tomorrow. And moving into non-action Commission discussion, since I kept this meeting less than three and a half hours, we will have executive session right after, so I will look for a motion to enter executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries, we will meet for exec session in the room next door, so thank you, everybody.